Folks that are with her. So Nicole is the owner of Nicole's Learning Academy. She has multiple locations. She has a location here in Jacksonville. She also has a location in Longview, Tyler, and Garland. She is also the owner of CBS Scrubs. That's out on East Rusk Street, out where the Chamber of Commerce used to be located. And she recently just bought the Brighter Sky Learning Academy, which is the daycare on the north end of town, the red building there. So that was a big hole that was left in the community when that business went out of business. We had a lot of kids who didn't have anywhere to go. We had folks who weren't able to go to work. So she stepped in as the entrepreneur that she is and kind of filled that void. And so that's one thing that I've learned about her is where she sees opportunities, she jumps on it. I was doing a little bit of reading about her today, and it sounds like she started out from the very bottom as a CNA and just kind of worked her way up through school. She's now almost completed her nurse practitioner while she's running multiple businesses. And so it takes people like Nicole and her support staff and everybody else and her team to really help keep a community like this moving. So we just want to thank her for all that she does and wish her success in all her endeavors in the future. You're very welcome. We gotta take a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside whatever time is necessary to hear concerns from our citizens. Did we have any people that turned anything around?
Oh, no, sir.
No? No cars. Item number seven is our consent agenda. Items under this require little or no deliberation by the council. Y'all can see there that's just approval of the minutes. Going to sell some surplus equipment, utility write-offs, employee holiday vacation, a holiday calendar. So if you see those and agree to those, I will entertain a motion for those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion, my councilman, Rob Gowan.
Second.
Second, my councilwoman, Mindy Gellit. Any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. The next item is our quarterly financial report presented by Finance Director Roxanne Bragg. Thank you, Roxanne. Tell us some good news.
I'll start. There'll definitely be some accounting news, for sure.
Randy loves that stuff.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm happy to be here to present the fourth quarter report. So while this is the last quarter of fiscal year 23, the year-to-date activity and the percent to budget amounts are subject to change. And that's because we work off something called modified accrual accounting. So throughout the year and also the way we budgeted is pretty much a cash basis. We get it in, we recognize it as revenue, we pay something, we recognize it as an expense. But at the end of the year, between now and when the auditors come to present in March, we take all of that and redo a lot of it to accrue items. So I'm just saying that because that number is probably not going to be exactly that number. It'll be close, but it won't be exactly that. So, yeah, the year-to-date budgetary comparison number is 100%. And combined revenues are at 32.8 million, which is greater than what we budgeted. And the revenues are decreased a little over 4 million or 11% from last fiscal year. And that's because last year, we received two bond proceeds. So if it wasn't for those bond proceeds of last year, we would be above this year compared to last year. Property tax revenue, we ended the year about 111,000 under budgeted expectations, but was increased about 742,000 over the last year. Sales tax revenue, at the time of this report, I did not know what the September number was going to be, but that came in last week. And for the year, we finished about 118,000 less than what we budgeted, and it was decreased about almost 160,000 from last fiscal year. I've got sales tax data that goes all the way back to the 90s, and rarely do you see two years in a row that are decreased. So sometimes we have a down year that's usually followed by two or three up years after that. So we budgeted a four and a half roughly percent increase on sales tax. So we'll just kind of have to watch and wait and see what happens. We'll just manage that. And miscellaneous receipts, they're at 80.2% because we budgeted getting money from the bank to refinance the note payable that we have on our fleet vehicles, and we didn't do that. And every other category you see is at or above the 100% mark. And this just breaks it down. The other slide was about everything combined in the categories, and this slide is about the funds. Budget overages in the general fund include interest income coming in 86,000 higher than expected, the $81,000 sale of the ambulance that we didn't budget for, and then some intergovernmental revenue, 50,000 from JEDCO for demo, 9,000 for the Great Jacksonville Cleanup Event for ETCOG, and then 61,000 federal medical assistance, which is related to our ambulance service. Adblock tax revenue in the debt service fund came in below budgeted expectations, but it was offset by higher-than-expected interest income. 585,000 transfer in revenue to the General Capital Projects Fund. Instead of getting money for refinancing that note, we had the general fund pay for it. So a transfer from the general fund over to the General Capital Projects Fund is what pushed that over budget. And then we have the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund, which just came into existence at the end of September. We were able to move the amounts that we hoped to move, so I'll talk more about that in just a minute. In the grant fund, we budgeted revenue from Texas Parks and Wildlife for the Boding Access Project and also the Butner Park Project, and neither one of those are complete. The Venue Project Fund has an extra transfer from the hotel motel occupancy tax. And then in the Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax Fund, we're about $20,000 less in tax revenue than we anticipated, and that was offset somewhat by greater-than-expected interest income. Does anybody have any questions about revenues? I love revenues. That's my favorite thing to talk about. The expenses, not so much. Okay, we'll move on to the expenses anyway. So the good news here is that everything is under budget except for the transfer out, and that transfer out is going to be the establishment of that VERF, and then also the transfer to the venue project and transfer for paying off that note. In total, expenditures were decreased about $765,000 from fiscal year 22, and that's related to these transfers out. Salary premium pay was an item in our old pay system. It was actually kind of divvied out twice in fiscal year 22 and then stopped completely in 23. So that's one of the reasons that we're $765,000 less. And also, we paid off the capital lease for our ambulances.
Roxanne, our maintenance line item, we're only at 22%?
Yeah, that's because that's where that bond money for the streets is, and it also has bond money for the water sewer bonds as well. So we budgeted like 100%, like we were going to spend all those bond proceeds. And you know, the street project, we were just talking about that Thursday. It's just now kind of ramping up. And then the Water Development Board project, there's a lot of engineering and planning and things like that happening right now, but we're not in the construction phase yet.
So it's not like it's maintenance that we didn't do that we said we'd do, it's just we haven't gotten to those projects yet?
Yeah, it's a really high amount of bond money. General Capital Projects finished well below budgeted expectations, and that's that bond money. And we did have some more savings. Fire Station Number Two remodel, we budgeted for, and that hasn't started up yet. And then also, we had some capital machinery and equipment in the Streets Department that was on back order, so we weren't able to get that this fiscal year. It'll be for next fiscal year. In the Grant Fund, we budgeted expenditures for Butner Park and Lake Jacksonville grants, and they were not completed before the fiscal year end. HOT is that transfer. At the end of the year, we did an additional transfer of about $120,000 to the Venue Project Fund for some renovations, additional renovations. And then Utility Fund, well below budgeted expectations, which is similar to the Capital Projects Fund in that it's holding bond proceeds. We'll look at our fund balance for just a moment. Fund balance is important because it's a measure of our available expendable financial resources. It provides important cash flow coverage, allowing us flexibility to cover unexpected costs, and it positions us to take advantage of unexpected opportunities. For example, paying off that note on the vehicles. Healthy unrestricted fund balance provides many benefits to us, and it also can help reduce the cost of borrowing by enhancing the credit rating of the city. At the end of the year, we increased our fund balance just over 1.3 million, which is fantastic. All of the funds that do have a fund balance requirement per policy exceeded their target balances. You don't see utility capital projects anymore because it was combined with the utility fund. Normally, our fund balance is around 12 million, so sitting at 22 million, that's holding those bond proceeds and also grants that we haven't expended yet. Okay, and the last slide, let's kind of look at our cash position. We decreased cash just over 2.3 million from the third quarter, but that's totally normal. It's part of our cycle. You get the money from tax proceeds at the beginning of the fiscal year, and your expenses don't quite catch up till the end of the fiscal year. We still have until November 30th to receive revenue or payables to get those processed as part of our modified accrual accounting. As you can see, the distribution is pretty much the same as it was last time, and that cash is primarily related to, in August, we paid just over 1.5 million for our debt service. And that is all I have for you guys. Do you have any questions?
Our next, thank you, Roxanna. Our next item is our second reading of a resolution in support of economic development incentives by Shane Pace.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this is the second reading of Resolution 11-023-01. City Manager did present this last Thursday at your workshop. I was unable to be there, so thank you for doing that. I'll do my best to go through this as quickly as possible, but being the public forum that we have, I want to make sure that everyone understands what the project is, and so I'll run through some of the highlights for you. So this is a resolution up for consideration for the approval of a JEDCO expenditure in an amount not to exceed $375,000. This project began back in the summer of 2023. Myself and City Manager James Hubbard worked together to reach out to Brawleys, which is located in Palestine, and really trying to have them come look at Jacksonville and specifically looking at the former City Hall Building. If you haven't been to their facility, they operate out of an old school building, elementary school, and so we knew that these folks were capable of kind of thinking outside the box. And we had an opportunity there that we thought would be great for them to be in addition to our downtown. When we brought Mr. Stephen and Vicky Brawley down to look at the building, they were excited about it, but unfortunately, the building just didn't quite meet their needs. It wasn't large enough. So while we're standing on the street, we looked over at the old Capital One Building and said, well, that building's for sale. Got the owner on the phone. He was there in about five minutes, and the rest is history, as they say. So we were in the building, they looked at it, they think it is a perfect fit. They did determine that they would need to expand the building, so one of the things that I'll talk about in a moment is that there's going to be an expansion to the east side. But they started working immediately with the property owner and with Ace Hardware to really do a layout and determine if the store would be a good fit with that expansion. Through all of that, they determined that it would be a good fit. Our market is definitely something that they're interested in. It looks like they will be successful. And they just came to us and said, look, we think that this is a good fit, and we'd like to know what you can do to assist us to get there. You know, one of the things, when you go into a project like this with a building of this age, is there's going to be a lot of unknowns. This is their first satellite store, their first expansion in a building that's been sitting there for almost a decade, and so, you know, there's some unknowns, and they're taking a big risk here, but we're excited to have them. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of what their kind of capital expenditures are and what their output would be, they're right now projecting at about $3.7 million. That includes the acquisition of the building, all the interior renovations, the expansion of about 2,500 square feet, as well as all the shelving and inventory and all of that that it takes to run a store like that. So that's a significant capital investment that they're going to be expending. They, we anticipate that it will increase the assessed value of that building significantly over a period of time. Right now, the building's on the tax rolls for about $235,000. We anticipate just by using some of the neighboring properties that, over a period of time, that will increase by approximately about $1 million. So that's going to add more adblock or property tax to the tax rolls for the city, for a building that's been inactivated. It will also increase sales tax. So right now, the building is most well-suited for some sort of office use that would not generate sales tax. And so over time, we anticipate that they will generate a significant amount of sales tax. They are estimating on an annual basis of around $4 million. What that would realize to both JEDCO and the city would be about $60,000 annually, and I'll talk about how that incentive package may work. In addition to the sales tax and the property tax, they will also be creating new jobs. So they're anticipating anywhere between 18 and 25 jobs to be created with an annual payroll of in between $650,000 and $780,000. So these are the types of projects we really look for as an economic development corporation and as a community, something that's going to really kind of spark activity on that corner, as well as bring in additional revenue, bring new jobs, and bring goods and services that aren't here today. One of the things that we see with Brawleys that I think makes them so special is they're not just a hardware store. They have a lot of really, you know, just to be kind of casual, really cool things in their store. They have grills and man gifts and meat thermometers and, you know, things fire and pizza ovens and all these cool things that people like, that we don't really have here today that they're going to Palestine or they're going to Tyler, they're going somewhere else to buy. So let's bring that here and let the folks who live here shop here and, you know, spend their money here in Jacksonville. And so we think this is a great project. So the JEDCO Board did review this over a course of two different meetings, and they did vote unanimously to approve the package that I'm about to describe. They approved an award of a downtown redevelopment grant, so our DRP grant, everyone on this council is familiar with that, the amount of $100,000 given the size of the building. And it is within our downtown redevelopment grant program boundaries, so they awarded that $100,000 grant there. They also awarded a capital grant of $150,000 for that expansion that I mentioned a few minutes ago, of approximately 2,500 square feet to the east side of the building. And just for clarification, both of these will be paid out once the project is complete. So once they've completed the renovation of the interior of the building, once they've added the expansion, and they're open for normal operations. So once that happens, they would receive those funds. In addition to that, the JEDCO Board did award a sales tax rebate. That's 100% of the sales tax that JEDCO collects, which is a half cent, over a period of seven years at a maximum of $125,000, so whichever occurs first. So that's a total package of, again, $375,000, as I said at the beginning of this presentation. So again, as I mentioned, the Board of Directors did hold a public hearing on this on October 19th, and they did grant this unanimously, or vote to approve this unanimously, and this is the second reading of Resolution 11-2023-01. And are there any questions before I read the caption for, from any of the council members? Okay. So the caption is, "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Jacksonville, Texas, approving projects of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation that may include land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure, and improvements found by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors to promote new or expanded business development within the City of Jacksonville, providing perseverance and effectiveness."
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next item is to discuss and consider with possible action the resolution in support of the economic development incentive that we just heard. So I will entertain a motion. Hold that item.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution in support of the economic development program that Shane just presented.
We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latidia Horst. Any discussion?
Well, the pink flamingo boots over there in Jackson. I'm reading this Facebook post, literally, their Facebook post for the day kind of deal, and these boots are perfect for somebody. And I knew exactly. Talk about targeted advertising.
Well, we have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We're going to move item eight down, which is kind of like a 10C. Any action out of Executive Section if necessary, and I think we do have one.
We do have one, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
So I make a motion that we approve the Chapter 380 agreement for sales tax rebate with Brawleys, Ace Hardware.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit, and I will second that motion by Mayor Randy Gorham. So is there any discussion that we need to have?
No, Mayor, the only thing I would like to sort of say publicly is the Brawley family is here.
Yes, sir.
Extremely thrilled to see you here tonight. It's been a pleasure working with you over the last couple of months. And similar or almost identical to the sales tax rebate that JEDCO is going to be approving and awarding to the Brawley entity would be the city's reciprocation of that, and that would be $125,000 sales tax rebate agreement paid out annually based on their payment into the comp trailer. It is capped at $125,000 exposure to the City of Jacksonville with a seven-year duration. So whichever occurs first, the payment of the 125 or the seven-year duration.
So the combined incentive package between JEDCO and the city's 500?
That's correct.
500,000. We have a motion in a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And for y'all that don't know, Stephen and Vicky and their son and another son.
Sam.
Sam?
And Reed.
Okay. They're here tonight, so welcome them to Jacksonville. We've done our best to try to get them here. Now make them a, make them a great representative. We look forward to it.
I can't wait for ladies' night 2024.
That's great. Thank y'all for being here. We look forward to a great relationship. Item number 11 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving a renewal extension and modification of an agreement with the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, there's a little bit of information on the slide, but as discussed Thursday, when the city purchased the Civic Center, now being referred to and named the Jackson, it was a $750,000 purchase. The city paid 500 at closing, and then to put it just in layman's terms, we financed 250 through Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation over seven years. That led to an annual payment with zero interest of $35,714. As we entered the remodel and just identified some additional needs, JEDCO was kind enough to basically say, hey, why don't we bump out your fiscal year 24 payment to the end of what would have been that seven-year term, making it, I believe, a 2029 payment, freeing up that money for the purchase of some chairs and other FFNE we're going to need to operate the facility. This is just formalizing that as previously discussed.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the renewal extension and modification of an agreement with Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Tim McRae. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving a replat as recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this replat was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's approximately just shy of a 20-acre tract kind of on the east side of University Hills, sitting north of Canada, west of Bailey, and south of O'Keefe. It's been replatted per the applicant's request into seven lots. The lots range in size from just over two acres to generally just under four acres. I believe three of the lots will be accessed from Bailey via private driveways, and the remaining lots will be accessed by the roads of Baylor, Stanford, Purdue, and Harvard Streets currently in the Phase 1 and 2 of University Hills.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion, and then we can discuss if necessary.
I'll make a motion that we approve a replat as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Gowan.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Tim McRae. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13 is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution casting votes for Cherokee County Appraisal District Board members.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, at your October meeting, you unanimously nominated LeAnn Kendall Owlsley to be named to the ballot. She did, was successful in that. You'll see the 10 names put forth by the various taxing entities in Cherokee County. This is a process that takes place every two years, and interestingly, every board member serves concurrently, so every board member is up every two years. There's no kind of overlap or staggering of the board members. The city has 430 allocated votes, and should, per the council's direction tonight, we'll fill out the resolution and send it to the appraisal district. We should hear before December 31st, who has officially been voted on to the board, and then their term will start January 1 of 2024.
Okay. So our item is to vote our 430.
That's correct, and they can be divvied up amongst multiple candidates or all put in one basket if you want.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we cast all of our ballots for LeAnn Kendall Owlsley.
Okay, we have a motion to vote all of our, all 430 to LeAnn Kendall Owlsley by Councilman Rob Gowan.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Tim McRae. Any discussion? I think if we divide them up, we'd probably have a slimmer chance of getting our nominee. I think if we divide them up, we'd probably have a slimmer chance of getting our nominees elected, so I think that's a wise decision. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fourteen is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding a contract for the twenty-twenty-three street improvement projects.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, at various workshops recently, we've been discussing road maintenance projects and road reconstruction projects. This is kind of the first, as Roxanne mentioned, kind of the kickoff to that. We did issue some bonds to fund several of these projects. Canada Street will be one that we'll be discussing publicly again. We've touched on it in the past, but we're just finalizing some design elements related to its reconstruction between sixty-nine and South Fulton. But we do have various segments of roadway here for your consideration this evening. This project was advertised in early October, and the bid opening took place on October twenty-fourth. We had two bidders, one coming at just over one million and one at just over one-point-eight-four million, with the engineer's estimate being just shy of one million. Per our consulting engineer, Mr. Chuck Sampson, P.E., and our internal reviews, we do recommend council award to Lone Star Equipment at their bid of one-point-zero-nine-five million dollars for these reconstruction projects. We do anticipate a rather hefty maintenance project coming forward in the spring of twenty twenty-four. We're currently working through the process of that. I spent some time on the phone with Chuck this afternoon. The maintenance projects involve materials and processes and procedures that require warmer weather. So we'll look to see those kick off probably June and throughout the summer. There's some benefit to trying to do that, too, when school's out and we don't have bus routes that we're conflicting with. However, these projects are generally full-blown reconstruction, meaning all the pavement that you see today will be milled and recompacted or hauled off, and we'll have a new road surface completely constructed upon these segments of roadway. And you see them listed there on the slide. It's about a two-hundred calendar day contract. Generally, a calendar day contract just means you just count right along the days. There are some allowances for bad weather. There are also some liquidated damages, which are penalties if the contractor is unable to complete the project on time. And we expect the contractor to commence construction prior to the end of this calendar year. So we'll be getting out a lot more public information related to how exactly they're gonna phase these projects. Again, there's a little of that to be determined. We'll have what's called a pre-construction meeting pending your award. Predicated on the pre-construction meeting, we'll issue them a notice to proceed, which then starts their two-hundred calendar day contract.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid by Lone Star Equipment for one million ninety-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars to be applied to the street projects that are, have been listed in front of us.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. And I think it's noted that the list, the order that they're listed in is not necessarily how he'll do them, right?
That's, that's correct, Mayor. I mean, we tried to cluster projects. You generally get better pricing on a mobilization and things, especially if there's subs involved. But we really use data from our road botic study that was done a little over a year ago that drove every road in town and gave them basically a metric or a PCI, a pavement condition index number to just dial in on these projects.
Okay. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fifteen is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding of maintenance work at water well number four.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, at Thursday's workshop, Randall gave a real in-depth kind of overview of this process. I'm gonna kind of consolidate it a little bit tonight. We do have five water wells that serve our water customers inside the city limits of Jacksonville. We also have our surface water treatment plan on Kickapoo, but these wells are of great, great importance to our water system. You see there that this well has been in operation since nineteen-seventy-two, so we've gotten a lot of life out of it. This is kind of an interim maintenance project that we hope will yield a better return from the well and reduce the time we have to run our pumps and motors and everything. This is actually a camera shot down the well shaft, showing that the screen with which the water is generally sucked into the well and then pumped into the above-ground tank is about sixty to seventy-five percent clog. And so we are recommending a ward tonight to Russell Drilling Company out of Nacogdoches in the amount of seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars to do a hydraulic jetting process in which they'll, you know, attempt to really clean out the screens through which the water is pumped and then put our pump back down in the well. This is a new process. We haven't done this, but extending and maximizing the life of the city's five water wells is definitely in our best interest and our rate payer's best, best interest. A new well today is well in excess of two million dollars, and we feel fairly confident that this just under seventy, just over, rather, seventy-five thousand dollar process will be, you know, result in better, better production at the well.
Good. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we award a maintenance contract to Russell Drilling Company for well number four.
I have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae. Any questions, discussions?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
On this particular situation, so is there gonna be an ongoing maintenance plan that's gonna be put in place for the rest of the wells to try to prevent from getting to this place in the future?
I mean, that's a, that's a great question. Generally, we wanna see how this performs. So we'll know based on the well runtime and the production whether this was successful and whether it was really a value-add service.
Really fix the problem.
But we, you know, we were doing some other maintenance on this well, and then that's when we found out that basically the gravel pack, which sits even outside of the well shaft, we replaced that, and then we cambered it just to make sure what we were looking at, and we noticed the screen was heavily congested.
Right, and I know this isn't a budgeted expense, and so we talked about on Thursday that this would likely come from the fund balance for utilities.
Uh, not necessarily. We think we can absorb a big piece of it by just shifting around different maintenance-related items that were budgeted.
Okay.
But.
The key to this one is that the pump's already out.
That's correct, yeah.
And so that's a, we're not going looking for this problem.
Right.
That.
Yeah, it's an expensive one nonetheless.
It's there, yeah, but while the pump's out, let's fix it.
Yeah, and I'm sure the utility department's got a repair and maintenance budget that'll absorb this seventy-five. Yeah. Yeah.
In depth.
Any other discussion or question? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
How much money we spend on this? Do we say that?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, yeah, about seventy-five is, okay.
Item number sixteen is to discuss and consider with possible action budgeted purchase of a new ambulance.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we have a, city maintains a fleet of four ambulance, two stationed at Station Two, and I believe two at Station One or nine-one-one South Bolton address. As budgeted, we had budgeted for a twelve-foot module, but as discussed and as presented by Chief Finley on Thursday, there are a lot of benefits to both our employees both in their training environment and their real-world emergency scenario environment, as well as the community and caring for people who are having the unfortunate circumstances to be riding in an ambulance. If we were to upgrade to a fourteen-foot module, it's not only longer, but it's also much taller, providing for more headroom and more ability to work above a patient who may be on a stretcher within the ambulance. There is an increased cost of that through Frazier, a buyboard vendor. You see that the purchase price on the fourteen-foot module would be three-oh-seven as compared to the two-eighty-two of the twelve-foot module. It leaves us in the hole about forty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars as opposed to what we budgeted. We feel like around twenty thousand of that forty will be absorbed by the sale of the ambulance that we'll be selling. Last year, we saw the Medic One that we sold come in at eighty-one thousand dollars and the buyer paying the associated fees with that. We feel like the ambulance that we'll sell this year will probably come at that or better, offsetting a good portion of the forty-one thousand. Chief, give Chief Finley some kudos. He's already found some other opportunities to save money that was budgeted. He had the difficult position of coming in on the tail end of a budget being approved, so everything that he inherited was from his, his predecessor and from myself. And I just wanna lean on his expertise in making this purchasing decision.
Okay. Heard that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we buy a fourteen-foot ambulance this trip instead of a twelve-foot.
I have a motion by Rob Goen, Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any question, discussion?
Don't ask Chief Finley a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. So we budgeted two-sixty-five for a new ambulance?
That's correct.
Yeah. And we're spending forty-one thousand more. Did we budget the sixty-five thousand to sell the old?
We did budget sixty-five for the sale, but we feel like it's probably gonna come in closer to eighty-five, potentially higher.
So twenty.
And so I think around twenty will cover of the forty-one is going to be covered by the sale.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, in, in previous year.
The two thousand and nineteen one that you've got, I mean, we didn't expect that to go for eighty-one thousand.
We did not, no.
Yeah.
And we think this one will, I mean, obviously with ambulances being three hundred thousand dollars.
Maybe we can get a hundred.
Maybe we can get a hundred for it, yeah.
That's kind of what we're hoping, we're not, we're not publicly committing to that.
Right.
No, no, but.
We're hoping that generally we can cover almost all of the forty-one for the sale. They're harder and harder and harder to get. The lead times are very, very excessive, and so I think we'll do well on the sale.
Oh, it says, I was gonna ask, delivery twenty-two, twenty-three in June.
Well, we took delivery of one in June of twenty twenty-three. This one we would expect in August of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And the nice thing about, we used to do what was called a remount, where we would send our chassis in, and they would be out of service for some time, where they remounted a new box or refurbished the box, or generally refurbished our box and put it on a new chassis.
Right.
With this program, we're able to keep the, the box that's gonna be sold in service until the date that we basically take delivery and put in service the new one. Definitely helping on response times and just our ability to respond to emergencies.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Discussing, number seventeen, discuss and consider with possible action accepting the bids on lots two through four Summit Division and Lot One Block C, Lake Springs subdivision.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as previously approved by the City Council, the city did choose to auction four non-lakefront lots but that are on ninety-nine lake, ninety-nine-year land leases, sorry, I got tongue-tied. The auction started September eighteenth, lasted for just over thirty days, ending on, I believe it was Friday, October twentieth. You see there the sale prices on those lots. We did have successful bidders on each of those four lots, and this is the process to basically allow our city attorney Brett Brewer to kind of finalize contracts and make, schedule closings on these lots.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bids on the four lots that are located around Lake Jacksonville.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Any discussion? Did we budget this revenue?
We did not.
There you go, there you go. Here's the answer to everyone's question. There we go.
There you go.
I, I do, I will say that GovDeals, just so the public can hear this, GovDeals is a fantastic platform. Anytime we've been bidding things lately, that's kind of our new gold standard, whether it's real estate or Chinaware that we inherited with the purchase of a building or something. So we do our best to market those on Facebook, but they go out globally. It has a big group. It's very similar to an eBay platform. It's extremely transparent. You can place your bid, you can see your bid. It's really kind of cutting-edge as opposed to having sealed bids handled here at City Hall. I think it's just more forward-facing, and I think it's helped us yield better results on the sale of city assets.
Exactly.
I do have a question. The proceeds from the sales of these lots, what can those proceeds be used to worth?
General fund, expenditure.
Okay.
Ambulance, ambulance.
Drill it and fixing that well?
Yeah, yeah, that's usually.
Randall agrees.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eighteen is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution that denies an increase in revenue and a change in rates proposed by Centerpoint Energy Resource Corporation.
This is a little unfair, but I'm gonna ask Brett to touch on this one. He was very succinct in Thursday's workshop and can explain it, I think, a little bit better than I can.
Okay, so Centerpoint is one of the utility providers that uses our rights of way. And so they have to present to cities their increased rates. And, and they're routinely typically by cities generally denied, which then allows them to appeal to the Public Utility Commission. And it's usually worked out along the way so that they do get an increase, but perhaps not as drastic as it was anticipated to be. So, and it also freezes, keeps the rates where they are for as long as we can.
Okay. That's pretty common, isn't it, Brett?
We do very regulate for Centerpoint, Encore, you name it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that resolution.
I'll gladly make a motion that we deny Centerpoint a rate increase.
We have a motion by Council, Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
A second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Open forum for mayor and council. Wanna talk, Rob?
I'm feeling better today.
Okay, okay.
Called an old grumpy man the other day, so I'm trying to take LaTisha's words to heart.
How long have you known me? LaTisha.
Yeah.
It's all right.
Hold on, sorry.
That's okay. I did, I did. So two things, actually, I wanna say. Yeah, I'll come up with a new nickname for it. So I do wanna just say thank you so much to Encore as well as to city staff. So earlier this year, the folks in District One came together. We had a focus group, and they were able to share with us what some of their thoughts and concerns are, particularly for District One. One of those that came out that was top priority was the, the low lighting along MLK. If you've ever driven down MLK at night or at dusk, you can see just how dark it is. You tend to see a lot of trash thrown back there, mattresses dumped, and all sorts of things. And so folks said, we feel like if it was better lit, that people wouldn't feel like they could do those things under the cover of dark. And so brought that to the staff's attention, sat down with James and Renissa, and they said, hey, we'll get right on it. And so James reached out to Encore and got them out there to take a look at it. And so, long story short, we now have ten new LED lights along MLK. And it's lit up like a Christmas tree, and we absolutely love it. So just wanna say thank you so much to staff for your help in getting that done, as well as to Encore for, for making it happen and in such a timely manner. So thank y'all so much for that.
You're welcome.
And then just also wanted to share with everybody, there should be some flyers at the back. Greg, thank you so much for printing these for me. But there should be some flyers at the back. So the Greater East Texas Community Action Program is gonna be in Jacksonville on Thursday at Seminary Heights Church of Christ over on Arnold Street. They're gonna be helping folks fill out applications for their weatherization program. So through that weatherization, and that's for folks living anywhere in Cherokee County. You don't just have to live in District One or District Two or Three or Ten, anywhere in Cherokee County. They're just coming here to help folks fill out their applications. The application process can be a little daunting for folks, so they're kind enough to come down from their offices and help folks fill them out. So their weatherization programs, everything from weather stripping around your windows and your doors, they'll come in and do additional insulation in your walls and your attic. Caulking, they'll do, they'll install solar screens, LED lights, programmable thermostats. So it's all in an effort to help your home become more airtight. And also, so, so that it's not only more comfortable for you in the hottest of days and the coldest of days, but also to drive down your energy costs. We just denied an increase in rate to, to, you know, one of our utility companies for that reason. So they've got plenty of money, so try to keep a little bit of it in your pocket. So again, they will be here Thursday, this Thursday, Seminary Heights Church of Christ over on Arnold Street. Anyone is, is welcome to go over, have them help you fill out an application. Thank you.
Who pays for that?
Yeah.
I might wanna have it done.
Go over there, they'll be happy to fill out an application.
Yeah, really.
Anybody else? City manager report?
Just a couple items. We have seen kind of a uptick in the population and activity in the black vultures out of the lake again. It's unfortunate. It's something that's very, very difficult to control. However, I'll, I'll let you know and I'll let the community know that additional traps from a federally licensed and permitted trapper mitigator were set this afternoon. Last time they came out relatively successful, I think we were able to remove upwards of two-hundred-and-fifty black vultures from the community permanently. However, you know, time will tell. It, it didn't last very long, I'll just say that. We've tried different things as removing dumpsters, trying to, you know, not have fish, fishers gutting fish out there and things like that. But they're just, they just keep coming back with a vengeance. So we are aware of it and we're doing steps. They're federally protected, so we're relatively limited. I wanna give kudos to our staff because there's a lot of procedures you have to jump through to get the federal government out here with one of their contractors to help you permanently remove the birds. We have to do a lot of noise eradication and different type of nuisance things. We have to do a lot of noise eradication and different type of nuisance things prior to them coming out here and taking kind of permanent action. The Civic Center renovation is well, well underway. We anticipate construction substantial completion to occur in December. You see a picture that was taken middle of last week there in kind of the grand ballroom, which has been significantly opened up.